All right, go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone, welcome to Veterans and Politics Candidate Interviews. We are on the Las Vegas City Council's Special Award Election Five. So again, on behalf of the Veterans and Politics, we want to welcome everyone who's out there in Facebook, live streaming, wherever. Again, this is brought to you by Veterans and Politics. If you want to join up with us, it's only fifty dollars a year, and you can go to www.veteransandpolitics.org. Really simple. So again, we need your support out there because he's on a mission, and there's no wishing about that. It's just, you know, he's all about the politics and making sure our community gets what it needs. So again, my name is Kevin Childs, I'll be the moderator today. We have great panelists here, so if you would please introduce you, we'll go from the left to the right. Panelists, state your name and introduce yourselves to the candidates.
Candidates, hi there, I'm John Moore, I'm twenty-four years in the Army, also a former Nevada State Assemblyman here. Thank you all for being here.
Hi, Michael McDonald, former city Las Vegas Systems Analyst, Vice President of the Family Civil Liberties Union, and the V I P I Legislative Council.
Rob Lauer, U S Army Military Police, and I'm also a reporter, journalist, and I will not be voting today, I was asking a question.
I'm Amanda Swann, again, for your colleagues.
Andre Haines, Publicist and Strategic Consultant and Auxiliary Director of V I B.
Robert Faust, U S Army, former U S Army Soldier, former professional baseball player, professional baseball coach. Thank you for being here.
Okay, and then what we're doing, we're gonna have you guys introduce yourself to everybody out there in Facebook and live streaming and to our panel, so who would like to start first? Just say your name for it, and then I'll go back into bringing you guys back, and I'll do the terms that we're gonna be doing today. So go ahead, your first name?
My name is Timothy Hicks.
Mic's in front.
My name is Timothy Hicks.
My name is Sheila Collins.
Randy Boyord.
Patricia Trish Nastaj.
Joseph Mitchell.
And thank you so much, and just for transparency, we did invite every candidate, and this is who showed up, just to get that on the record. So how this is going to work, we have our panelists, they have questions for you. So each get a minute to answer the question. I will say minute when your minute's up, and if, just finish your sentence, as long as it doesn't go another minute, and I won't be able to stop you. But again, bio? Oh, there, okay. All right, so then, what we're gonna do is go down, I'll start this side, start your bio, and each one of you, I'll give you a minute for your bio. Is that gonna be all right?
Thank you, moderator, my name is Joe Mitchell, I'm excited to be here, and one of the most important things I want to say is, thank you, this organization, thank you, Steve Sanson and Kevin Childs and all this incredible board here for hosting this event, and also thank you for your service. I do have a great respect and reverence for that, I come from a family that also served in the armed services. My background is, I'm from Michigan, I've been living here in Las Vegas for more than ten years, I am a student currently, and also in politics and city planning. And I am also a person of experience in city government as well, within the last, I would say just those short four years, so I've got an intimate understanding of how government works from the corporate side as well as the policy side. I also have a passion and a respect for this community, so I'm excited about being here answering your questions.
Hi, yes, I want to thank Steve and the board for having us here. It's a great forum in order for us to get our words out, because there isn't that many weeks in this campaign, let's put it that way. I have been here since my nineteen eighty, I am a second generation Polish immigrant family, my mother and my father were both in the World War Two. I have been a realtor, carpenter, and a owner of a, my doctor's, doctor's mom, owner of a medical building service here in town. All I've been is just pretty much self-employed. I started here back in nineteen eighty as a union carpenter, but there wasn't any work after building the Flamingo, so I went and learned how to build homes from the ground up. After that, I went back to school, learned medical billing, and for five years was an owner-operator of medical billing. Went back to school again, I needed to talk to people, and couldn't do it living at home doing medical billing, and I learned how to be a realtor. I have been in Ward Five for many years, I know what it means, we are a service-oriented type of a business, we need to bring the service back to Ward Five through title and everything else, and getting people back involved.
My name is Randy Boyord. I used to be a technical contractor and a construction lineman for cable television industry. I've lived in a number of states, mostly on the East Coast, when I moved out to the West, I worked in Washington, Oregon, came down here and worked in Albuquerque for a while, and finally settled here in Nevada. I went back to school and became a P T A, worked as a physical therapist assistant at a local clinic here. I've been in Ward Five now for going on thirteen years, of all the places that I've lived, I've always rented, this is the only place where I've actually bought a place to stay. So I'm not going anywhere, I've got a vested interest in being here, and I've had a chance to see this neighborhood kind of change, the whole area in general, and Vegas as a city change, some ways that are good, some ways that are not so good, a lot of ways that things could be done better, and being the kind of person that I am, I've just seen that if you don't take control of your own environment with your own ideas, it becomes someone else's and you just happen to live in it. And I'm running as a councilperson, councilman in Ward Five, because that's just one way for me to sort of take control of the people that I live around, for them to also have a say and have their voice in where they live and how they want to live.
Hello, everyone, again, it's a pleasure being here, I'm honored to sit amongst great people. I was born and raised in Las Vegas, Nevada, and as far as Ward Five, so I'm a native. My background is, I come from a two-parent, middle-class home, my mother's an educator and my father's an electrician slash politician. My background is, in my education, I have a bachelor degree in Criminal Justice Administration, I have a paralegal degree in Construction Law and Immigration Law, and I'm working on a master degree in Public Administration, uh, Masters in Public Administration. I'm a single mom, I have two sons, two outdoor and two grandsons, and I've been very active in this city for a very long time, for twenty years, social justice, if you probably heard recently. Okay, I just did a, I was part of the Women's March, one of the strong organizations, so it's an honor to be here, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone, my name is Timothy Hicks, and it's a pleasure to be here with you all, I appreciate you all inviting me out. I was born and raised in Ward Five, over fifty years residence, and I'm raising my family there now, I come from a family of twenty brothers and sisters. I have fourteen kids, my own eleven girls and three boys, I have a son that tends U N L V, and I have a son that's a Marine, and I have two other kids that have already finished college. And I have a long history of development in Las Vegas. I'm a general contractor, B two licensed general contractor, I've worked for Martin Harris, Perriney, Pratt Development, Knip Brothers, I've ran projects to where we've built homes from fifteen to twenty-five houses a day, and I played a big role in the development in Las Vegas.
All righty, now, panelists, you got your questions ready, go ahead and ask our candidates.
Robert Faust, could you, maybe you, Mr. Mitchell, could you just give us a brief description of the restraints of, not restraints, but the border of City Five, Council Five, the boundaries? Can we ask somebody to come down, please?
So you want to know the boundaries?
Yeah, I want to know what we're talking about.
How big is it?
Thank you, thank you very much. So, the boundaries start from, if you go to the south, it's gonna be Rancho and Alta. That is the far south boundary that we have. Then if you go to the east, the ward is gonna have a different configuration, so follow me, it's gonna go to the east as far as the ninth and tenth street to the east. If you go to the far north, the boundaries are Craig and Decatur. If you go to the far west, it then configures a different shape and it stops at Cheyenne and Rainbow. Then it goes clear all the way again south to Vegas Drive, and everything on the north of Vegas is Ward Five, on the south of Vegas is Ward Six.
Andre Haines, this question is for all of you, if elected, name one endeavor that you will continue that was introduced by your predecessor.
Yes, Mr. Haines, Joe Mitchell, I'll go first. One of the things I will say my predecessor did really well, is he focused on infrastructure, and that's important. The reason why infrastructure is, it raises land value. If you have traffic that comes into certain corridors, it is a precipice for investors to look at that, because they're driven by the numbers. They're also, are pushed, if you will, by the markets, the banks, what the banks and the economic, the financial institutions are willing to invest in. So that was a tremendous benefit that is, I believe, a wonderful feather in his cap,
To reiterate that, infrastructure is, we are a service-oriented type of a community, we're not an industrial, like up in North Las Vegas or down south by the airport, so service is our main fortitude right here. He did a great job, and I would like to continue doing that also with the homeless and over on, 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 on Foremaster Lane, he was one of the, by city council when they started that, and it's going through a transition right now, it's going forward, and it'd be great to see it go through.
When I'm thinking about where I live, I like good ideas, and one of the things I noticed that after the last campaign, the city website was redesigned, and one of the things about it was that transparency was one of the menu items you could select, and that was one of the key points of a prior campaign. The other thing is, a lot of residents and constituents were complaining about jaywalking and traffic tickets and the ability to cross busy streets, Rancho being one of them, and I've seen more pedestrian crosswalks with lighting signals that made it a lot easier and a lot safer for people to cross the street at places where they didn't have to worry about running for a bus, you know, a hundred yards one way and running back for the bus a hundred yards in the other direction, just across, get across the street and get to work. So those are basic things that directly relate to the quality of life, and any decision that I'd be looking at, or anything that is worth keeping, it's gotta be something that's gonna make it better to live here in Las Vegas, so whatever that is, that's what I'd be shooting for.
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna come from a different perspective, I was born and raised in Ward Five, and so, I don't know if most of you know, that Ward Five has been one of the community that has been marginalized and has a fifteen point two high unemployment rate, and so what I would say the predecessor has done, there has been a lot of fast food restaurants that was developed, and so when you bring in fast food restaurants, those are jobs. Not only that, he kept a line of communication open by having monthly contact with the community and all of his constituents at Starbucks, so those are the things that I would acknowledge.
I'd like to answer that, but I wasn't too happy with a lot of things. The main thing that I would like to see and focus on is homelessness. I was born and raised in Ward Five, and when I was growing up, there was hardly any such thing as homelessness. I walked those streets, rode bikes, and there was no homelessness. We have an issue with homelessness now. Not only that, I practically grew up in construction, there was no such thing as someone I worked in Ward Five. There was plenty of work, trades, people were able to share their trade, get out there and learn, I used to know all the general contractors, I used to know all the construction workers in my ward, and it's had tremendously changed. We're struggling now with a high rate of unemployment, and I think that a change needs to be about, and especially with the veterans.
Okay, I'd like to ask you then, what makes you feel uniquely suited to deal with that problem? To everybody else, I'd like to know what you think hasn't been addressed enough, and what would make you suited for that?
I just recently had a brother that passed away, cancer, that was a veteran, Danny Hicks, and taking him back and forth to the hospital and scheduling his appointments, I seen how difficult it was. And I also have a friend named Gerald Lit that worked in the veteran office right off of Owens, and we talked about a lot of things that was going on with the veteran, as well as the homeless in our community and the need that they have. And I was telling him, why we don't have posters, just like the election, throughout our ward, showing that veterans that need help, with who to call.
I'm glad you asked that question. Again, as I stated, I was born and raised in Ward Five, and so I've been on a journey a long time as far as bringing in economic development, working alongside of my father, and so I'm gonna talk about some of the projects that we have spearheaded, I'm gonna do the most recent project. We submitted a C B A, it's a Community Benefit Agreement, to the Las Vegas Rais Stadium, seeking them to do an investment in the community by bringing in jobs and focusing on business ownership for men and women. Not only that, we worked on, it's part slash, not Las Vegas and Ward Five are kind of collaborative, collaborative together, we, I was part spearheaded with the Hong Kong International Trade New Project that is going on now, and so with that is, that's E B Five program, and we said and negotiated with them to make sure that they have African-Americans and everybody across the board to be involved. Not only that, I want to say one more thing, kind of like ten years ago, I spearheaded with the M G M to make sure that diversity was brought over there in communities, so there's a lot of work that I've done alongside with many others.
I'm trying to remember your question.
What's something that you feel hasn't been addressed, or hasn't been addressed enough, that you feel you're uniquely suited to?
Well, one of the things, when we talk about addressing issues, until they're addressed, most people don't know that they exist. You guys here talk about a lot of things, you know, bail reform, that was one of the issues that came up before in the public. Asset forfeiture, where people just get pulled over and things come up missing, because they're not guilty of anything, they haven't been convicted of a crime yet, but they're gonna lose their property because of that. One of the other things I look at also is occupational licensing, when you talk about revitalizing the city, people get jobs because they do things that need to be done. I've known a number of people, especially when we hit that hard downturn back in oh eight, oh seven, and on through up till now, where they've lost their jobs and were trying to do things at home. One of my friends was fixing motorcycles in his garage, not that he's driving and doing donuts in the street or anything, but that's just an example of someone trying to still earn a living with the skills that they have in their own home. He didn't have enough money to rent a space or get a shop, neither did some of the people I know were doing catering. But the problems that they ran into were the restrictions that the city has regarding running businesses out of your home. For someone just starting out, that's where you're gonna start. If you want to see an economy grow, let people start filming their own enterprises and start earning their livings, their living with the skills that they have. The city can facilitate that without having to build up special districts like the North Rancho Airport, that's kind of sits empty without knowing what the occupancy rate is, but I don't see anyone there except for maybe one or two businesses up there.
I'm a real estate agent, so I'm gonna go through, I've seen, in two thousand six, seven, and eight, we had a huge vast array of titles going to Roth and going to Ride. So what happened was, people tried to sell the homes, it can't get done. Now we have homeless that are literally abandoned, and it looks horrible. There's two or three things that we can do as a, a, my city council member, we can clean up the house and attach a lane to the home, and that way the owner cannot sell it without paying back the city. Or if it's in that bad of disarray, we can bulldoze it down and make it into something else. There are, my community gardens that can be done, even though they're in the desert, but there is ways that we can go about it. And make work by a thriving, a service-oriented type of a business again. Also with the commercial end of it, there's a lot of empty commercial, you know, it's the old saying, commercials are the last thing, and the first, and they're the last to come back. We need to get commercial back into our ward. Over on Lake Mead and Jones, for instance, that center sits empty pretty much, we need to find out how come. I've tried as a real estate agent, and they're not answering these, so maybe the city councilperson will answer me and say, why is this, you know, place empty?
Because offerings are still bad and rent's bad.
I know they are, but it doesn't look good. It's not helping our service.
We wanted to, hold on, we gotta, thank you.
Officer, thank you for the question. One of the things I think that must happen, when I watched the city, and I started four years ago, six months into the office, I realized that there wasn't a development plan in place. So I actually engaged with U L B Design College and Urban College, and we put together a design plan, a development plan. And in that plan, we contemplated everything from a capital stack of sources and uses, and we also looked at the effects, the social effects of the historic west side as well as the northwest. And we looked at what it is that they have been disinterested in, and in that discussion and in those characts and neighborhood meetings, they just felt like they needed to first of all feel safe. So I believe, as a pro-business person, and my background is in government pensions and also working in community services from a small town, I believe the first priority is we have to have a community where people, women and children, can feel safe when they walk down the streets to the grocery store. And in conclusion, I think from that development plan, called the Hundred Plan, we then take it to the marketplace for them to invest in it. That plan was approved January third of this year.
Rob Lauer, just so I know, does your district ward include a Jackson, Washington area, right? Okay, so I own property there, I actually own property there, okay? I deal with apartments there, and we have a terrible problem with gangs, shootings, meth dealers, homeless breaking in, and the police aren't doing squat, nothing. And frankly, we have the city inspectors coming and harassing us over stupid weeds in the front yard, but no one's dealing with homeless that are breaking in and occupying houses in the backyard, in the alley, shooting up, gangs shooting up, shooting their guns. What are you gonna do to bring law and order to your district, to your ward?
Yes, thank you, Officer Gordon Lauer. This is what I believe, there isn't any community that's gonna thrive or do well if safety and security isn't the first initiative. But when I think of safety and security, it has to engage the community. This is what I've done. I've actually reached out to Metro, both our two new captains, Northwest, Yosemite, as well as Larkin, and we discussed ideas, how do we get there? I have an idea. I reached out to another friend of mine, former CIA agent, as well as a chief negotiator for Metro, and I said, let's put together a special police squad. We would immerse them in the community, they would not be, they would be basically eyes on the street, but they would not be black and white or apparent, they would essentially be undercover. We would begin to look at some of the social issues or the influencers in that area who is driving the crime profits. I think with that organization, or something similar to that, working under Metro, working under Metro, we can get a more proactive approach, because right now Metro is reactive, and they're quite honestly understaffed. That's my opinion.
Like I said, I lived here since nineteen eighty, I am a, I am also a motorcycle enthusiast. I have ridden now Washington and Vegas drive so many times, and it, back ten years ago, it wasn't this bad, it just wasn't, now it's gotten really bad. Veterans Village is, you know, already has done a great job with, Veterans Village one and two, and now three coming up. Also, over on Foremaster Lane, there has been a bill that's doing showers on Tuesday and Thursday with homeless, getting them, trying to get them into a society again. We've got to bring these people back to society, they, they are there for two reasons, they either want to be homeless, or they just have nowhere to go. I know back in two thousand and eight, I was pretty much homeless, I was living on my girlfriend's couch, because I lost my house and everything, so I know what it feels like to be homeless. As far as the situation goes, it takes awareness, it takes people being, people being part of the community and wanting to see this get better. My son went to a Gilbert Elementary School, which is over in the area too, and it just takes people getting, you know, involved, and that's what I think is gonna help out, and we need to encourage that.
I sympathize with your situation. I'm on the board of my H O A, I got on there after everyone else moved and their property sprashed, and we've had to be, had to deal with this same issue where people get cited for carports while other people steal a house, the guy with the carport has to pay, the guy who steals a house, well, there's nothing they can do. And we got involved with Metro, and we had a number of people that we started associating with to try to get a handle on people legally occupying homes, stealing a house. It's easy to do, come up with a fake lease, and it took a while for the legislature to respond to this situation where it allowed Metro to do anything about it, but even with that, that took a while to get through. And it's not a problem that's gonna go away, we see it growing. One of the things, I do like the idea of a squad, I was thinking something, one of the same, those cities used to have it before. I think a city in California just made a big push to clear out some of the streets because it's dangerous, it's a health hazard, and again, it's not something that's gonna go away. I'd like to see a bit more fairness when it comes to dealing with the people who have to pay the price to clean this up, as opposed to dealing with people who have to suffer the price for it, but again, we're not talking about a simple problem with a simple solution. It's gonna take, looking at it from a number of angles, but I think the priority has to be on the people who are going to bear the brunt of pain to get this problem resolved.
I'm excited about these questions, because it's part of my experience. We all know that high unemployment creates crime, but I'm gonna tell you my history about working in that area. Many years ago, I sat on the Metropolitan Police Advisory Board, and also, which is called Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority, I was the chair advisory woman as well. And let me tell you what we did, I did, I spearheaded this. About ten years ago, I was part of a housing community, which is Sherman Garden Annex, Billy Capri, and Sherman Gardens Act and Marble Manor, and so, a lot of the gangs, I worked in that area, and the children would kind of be alarmed, they want to play outside, and safety was very important to me. So what we did, along with Metro, I organized and spoke with the gang members, and I told them, and I asked them, and since they knew me as working in that community, that they would remove their colors. I want to say, eleven years later, you do not see any gang colors in that community because of the work that I done and I spearheaded. So I'm excited, and let me tell you, it's all about communication and relationship. If we get down in the trenches, because it worked, it worked for me and it worked for the people that I was part of in Metro, and so Metro used me heavily to spearhead that, and today in those housing developments, I don't care what anybody say, the gangs are not that active. Now, you might have the drug users, but the gangs are not that active, and I can validate that, thank you.
Well, number one, I'm not for taking anyone's property or maiming anyone's property. I think we need to clean it up, we need to find ways to raise monies, write grants, to help people bring their property up to par. The other thing is, is that when we talk about crime in our neighborhood, it's gonna take more than the police, it's gonna take the business owners, property owners in the community. And like I said, in this one right here, a committee, a security. And that committee comes together along with the neighborhood. And we take notice of houses that are drug houses. And we come together as a group and let them know that we see there's activity that shouldn't be going on here. And we allow Metro to come along with us to do that. And you have to, you have to do that. You have to go with face value. The secret, all of that, that's, that's, that's not it. We have to come together as a community and let them know all the places. And on top of that, we have to address the individuals that's walking our streets. We gotta find out, how can I help you? How can I get you out? And we have to take down these names. These committees have to be on, on ground. The city councilman cannot sit in city hall and do it. He has to come out of the community and meet with these committees on a daily and weekly basis in order to get this done. And we have to come to the end of that month and show what we accomplished. And if we're not accomplishing something, we need to do something different as a whole.
All right, Michael McDonald. So I have a unique perspective as I used to do reports for city council in Ward Five as well for business, for developmental services, business licensing and, and planning. And I would, I would like to, to address a question you guys as to, a lot of the business owners are saying there's way too many licensing fees, there's too much red tape in getting the planning, planning department. A lot of the code enforcement stuff is, is getting out of hand where they'll get sanctioned or fees, fees for, for anything. It, it's harder to, it makes business harder to, to, to grow businesses out here. It makes them harder to, to do business and to actually get their, their buildings put in place as, as there'd be years in planning sometimes to touch red tape there. And planning's necessary, but there's a place to where, where they, it takes years to get their projects through. So what would you guys do if you were elected in that situation? And another segue is, is also the homeless project for, uh, Foremaster, which was fifty-two million.
Just one question.
Okay, sorry.
Which one do you want? The homeless or do you want the other one?
So the business licensing, planning and the homeless.
No, just. So do you want the business licensing?
Yeah, so you guys can address that, thank you.
Well, being a general contractor and knowing that I once owned a five license, C-three frames, C-five concrete, A-13 regular demolition, and an A-13. And I, I went through the experience as well, what you're talking about, having to pay all those different fees. A general contractor, I could build a house from ground up. I could do a, a, a commercial building, three stories from ground to three stories. And I can't just go and pour concrete. I have to have a C-five license. But yet, I'm a general contractor that can pour slab for a building as well as, a commercial building as well as housing. So I agree with you that we need to work on those licensing fees and the time period to get up, to get permits and out quick enough to where we can do the job. That's slowing down a, a lot of our production in our community is permits and getting through planning. So I agree with you, we need to increase the amount of people working in, in planning.
I agree with you based on what you just shared, and let me explain why. Recently, we were again spearheading a project, which was the Mulan Boot. And we had a lot of difficulties with that project because it was always, um, they requested something else. Now, I'm not, um, I just kind of be part of the team overseeing. But there were individuals that worked in the construction department would share that all of the penalties they received and all the fees that they had to pay. And every time that they crossed down one road, there was another stumbling block. So I'm in agreement with that. And as a city council, I believe that we collectively with the constituents is kind of, um, put a plan of action together and see how can we work through that process to be effective for the city as well as the, the individuals who want the license. So because both sides have to make money and I understand that.
What's the point of a business license? Is it so that a city could find out to see who's doing commerce within the city limits? Or is it just another way to register to see who's making income, to see if you can get some more of it when you need more money to balance a budget? In my view, if you got a business and you're running a business in your home, what do you need a license for? If it's gonna be a service, if you're catering, if you're making small things, like I said, fixing bikes or whatever, why do you need someone's permission to be able to do that out of your own home if you're not working or if it's a side gig? Two, why do you have to renew a business license every year? Why don't you have a ten-year business license? Why don't you have a business license that's associated with registering to be a corporation if that's what you're going to be? And why are different business type licenses different prices? If you're doing business, just do business. Pay one price, pay it for five years, ten years, three years, or whatever, and be done with it. I don't understand why it's gotta be so complicated so you can play games about who's gonna get an exemption or who's gonna get a lower price or how you're gonna classify a business to be able to just work. So.
With fees collected.
Yeah, it's pretty simple. I, I don't think it's a complicated deal. Instead of just looking at it as a revenue source, just look at it as a way to maintain good commerce.
As of ten years ago, I never needed a business license to be a, my realtor. And now I do. And it's every single year, a hundred and ten dollars. And I don't understand why I went down and asked and when did this become law? Also, number two is, I've been through, because I'm a realtor, I've done through the zoning, um, on Smoke Ranch and Jones was A M P. I was the, our realtor for that. And we wanted to put in a car wash. Well, a car wash is C-two. Back in the day, this is going back ten years ago. Um, we had to go through hoops, through city council to say, a car wash is not a used car dealership, which is what they were associating with. So thanks to my client and me, we now have car washes that are probably have all over Ward Five. A car wash, five dollars, three dollars, two cents. And that's because we changed the laws of that. Being a city councilwoman, I plan upon changing a few of these zoning laws, which are totally ridiculous.
Okay, I want to thank everyone for their time to leave, to close the show.
Okay, thank you, Board Member McDonald. I'd like to just say, I'm not opposed to the zoning licenses. I am opposed to the cost that can be encumbered upon them. So the licensing, a primary job of the councilman is to protect the constituency and protect them from business that may be developed or business owners that may not have a skill set that is, I think is competent or at a level of competency that is needed to protect those constituents. But that being said, I do understand, because I have looked at the cost of applying for these licenses compared to Clark County, they certainly have a huge advantage over us. In fact, they even got a streamlined process where they can do it over a kiosk and do it online. So we know that we are lagging and that's unfortunate. And that is something that I think about because in order for us to get more business up and going, we have definitely need to be competitive on the costs. Um, the licensing component, there may be some over, uh, over, overlap. But I, I am strongly for making sure that we have the most competent, skilled individuals, ready and capable of building and protecting constituency. That's my point.
John Moore. Um, to each of you, if elected, you will probably deal with the situation that's currently going on with the, with the city and the county. Uh, the current attempt by the city to annex unincorporated areas of Clark County. Most of the folks that I know are not in favor of that. They see no, no, there's no reason for it. It's just another way for the city to impose fees, regulations, zoning restrictions and all this and that, mostly primarily for money. Where do you guys stand on that, each of you?
Yeah, Board Member Moore, I'll, I'll take it first. Um, I worked last year, as you know, I worked for the city of Las Vegas. I worked last year engaging all those county islands and as well as looking at, how do we put in place a preservation plan and overlay so that it doesn't encumber them? The difference of what you're talking about is a tax essentially. Right now, they're paying point three zeros, point zero three for sewer services. We don't control the water, county controls the water. If we bring them in, they will be roughly a point seven zero or point seven, a little more than point seven. So essentially, the difference between three cents and seventy cents. That's what is at issue here. This is what I believe. We can preserve the communities. And at the same time, we can also bring them the type of services that they need. The reality is just simply this. I looked at the numbers between Clark County and the city. There has to be a more sure-up agreement between the two jurisdictions to make sure what is being provided is fair and equitable time. That's my point of view.
I just had a conversation with two or three county island people. And also with the gentleman who is with the, who is with the, the fire department. The firemen said, our biggest thing is that if we go into the county island, we don't get paid for it. And if, I think if we were to look at the county part of it, that people like being who they are. They like no sidewalks, they don't want to have to conform. They have their wells and stuff like that, they don't need to have to go onto city water. If that's the case, let's make it to where that the fire department gets paid for going into county islands. And, um, let's make it to where that the county islands get to keep their own little, um, you know, um, you know, no sidewalks and water and stuff like that. I right now have a land for sale, which is point four one, a banana. It has to go, not on a well because it's point four one. So that one person would have to go onto the city water, which is down the street.
I don't know anyone in the county who's like, I wanna be part of the city. To me, that's more testing of how the city's run than anything else. And it's pretty clear it is about the money. I can't help the coincidental, coincidental nature of the Raiders stadium and them looking for a parking lot. I don't know what that thing costs. But somehow tying into municipal water supplies, you're looking at a few thousand dollars per person, per resident. We don't know what the rules are gonna be, but I know that other people who say they've had other areas annexed. And when I was living in Memphis, I saw them try to annex all the property when everyone was leaving Memphis to move out to the suburbs. It was to fit the budget for shortfalls. Now, if no one wants to be part of the city, all these people in the county are perfectly happy doing what they're doing, then I'm opposed to it because why are you gonna give somebody the same thing and just make them pay more for it? If you're making the mistake of the budget, you gotta address it from the root from what you're doing. But I don't see the people in the county saying, we're gonna be getting a great bang for the buck, we're gonna be getting extra value for our money for anything. Now, I don't know about the fire department's issue, but I gotta, I don't think they're punching out when they're rolling out there to take care of anything in the county. But either way, if the city actually needs more money, try annexing the strip.
Mr. Moore, um, I don't have enough information to answer your question, but I'm competent enough and my background is in law. And so I do a lot of research. And so if elected for the Las Vegas City Council, the next time you see me, you will have all those answers.
Thank you for your answer.
Well, just as I said in this forum, I was talking about committee. And it's up on the people, constituents to wear a part in opposing what they don't want. And this seat, city council seat, is a platform for the constituents to contact and make their voice. And I supposed to be a part of that committee that oppose whatever comes across that board. If, if the committee meet with the people and we come together and we say we don't want it, hey, that's what we do. We go against it, not as one, but as Ward Five. And that's what's gonna make a difference. And we have to get constituents up to par on how to come out and participate on a weekly basis, talking about the issue that we have. And then picking up a strategy, trying out, we're gonna go against it. And then from there, that's how we're gonna make a difference. It's time out for looking for one person to vote and make a change. It takes all of us to speak together against what we don't want.
So we have time for one more question. So I'm gonna go back to Mr. McDonald, his one about homeless, I guess. So I call it home challenge. So I hate to say, calling everybody less. So if you wanted to, I'll, I'll.
Yes, under, under, uh, under housed people, there's, there is a big influx right now of homeless out here in Nevada and the city of Las Vegas. Um, there has been a project that was approved for fifty-two million dollars for Foremaster, but there's vacant lots. And I think the, the council's, uh, plan is to build a resource center, almost like kind of tiny homes or little, little, uh, a big, kind of a warehouse. And they also have services such as counseling, job training. And these people, a lot of these people are veterans that are, fell under the luck or went through grievous situations or are really need counseling or those services. So if, if elected through there, would you support those projects and also support services for our homeless and to help them get off the streets and, and to better themselves?
So that mean yes or no question for them?
Uh, yes or no, and what, what would you do to, to help solve the homeless problem? You are, yeah, let's start with, Mr. Mc Donald.
If I'm elected in the seat, it would be what we come together and decide.
Great question, Ken. Um, I'm gonna share with you what I've already done for the last fifteen years. Every Christmas and we, in the summer, we go, you're absolutely correct, about the veterans that are out there homeless. I go out there myself. We just went Christmas, we provided blankets and coats and we talked to them. And we do, I've done this for a very long time. And so, um, that is so important to me because I'm on the ground to make sure, because those are human beings and these are individuals who go and stand on the front line and protect us as American people. And then they have to come back and sleep on the streets. That is such a disadvantage that irks my spirit so bad. And that has been here for a very long time. I go out there to see that, that they're laying on those streets and no one cares enough to make a difference for them. And so that is going to be a project that I'm going to just period.
And they're criminalizing homelessness as well?
Yes.
Homelessness, everyone who's homeless is a person. Not every homeless person is a veteran. I think veterans get a bad rap and that everybody seems to think, there seems to be a notion that most of the people on the street are homeless vets. There are a number of them that are, but most of the people who are homeless have made mistakes. Now, I've worked with people who used to be homeless on more than one occasion. I've also worked with people who actually chose to be homeless even after they had a home and kind of cycled through being homeless and having a home. I've seen some of those people waving the liberty tax signs, say, Tony, you know, I do this sometimes. Used to live at Seagull Suites, don't wanna live there anymore, I'd rather live behind it. I think you gotta respect the fact that every person's gonna make a decision. When they look at homelessness, it's a multi-dimensional thing. And my bigger concern is mental health. Because if someone is in their right mind and they decide they wanna live on the street, all right, live on the street. But we shouldn't be making it easy for you to make that choice. Living on the street is not something that we as a society and culture really advocate. We'd rather see people in a home. But if you run across, they say, you know what, I like it out here and I don't wanna deal with the limitations of being in the shelter. I don't wanna deal with the bills that I have to pay, I like to travel. I live in Seattle, homeless camps everywhere. People really have to make the choice of what kind of society and culture and city they wanna live in. We've got a lot of things, it's a complicated answer, I wish I had more time to get into.
Veterans suicide is about twenty-one, uh, people who, who do, who do a suicide per day. And here in Vegas with Nelson around there, it's pretty sad. Uh, Veterans Village and the Foremaster are two separate entities. Uh, Veterans Village is one and two, and now, and now they're doing tiny little homes for them also. And then Veterans, those three is for the women. Um, homeless on Foremaster has been in a forefront with the city council for quite a while. It was put on hold a little bit, but it's going, it is moving forward. It was just down there at Foremaster talking to a few of the people there. Um, it is true, you either choose to be homeless or you don't. If you don't, then, uh, the, my Foremaster's gonna be a great complex, it really is gonna be fantastic. There's gonna be community outreach programs and stuff like that. Same thing with the Veterans Village. Uh, they too are helping people get going, get jobs and get into, back into my society. Thank you.
My view is I support the mayor's initiative for no more veterans, plain and simple. I support her agenda, she is the CEO of City Council. She was the one that started the program essentially and created the She was the one that started the program essentially and created the call, the call to bring in what we have as resources. And that's the first thing that you do when you look at your problems. You look at the resources that you have existing around you. And she brought in some significant individuals, some people that understand this. And my colleague next to me, Ms. Messenger, is right. Veterans Village is a wonderful example of a leader that has the resources and also the ability to pull together relationships to do that. I believe that also the homeless issue is something that is everybody's responsibility. From the community, as my colleague at the end mentioned so very well, all hands on deck. That's my point of view. We have to get everyone that is interested and is capable of doing something to help us solve the homeless issue engaged. From the corporate people and those downtown corporations to the small stakeholders and the residents in the neighborhood. I have a plan for doing that as well. And I support the mayor's initiative completely in that process because I think she has her finger on the right pulse. That's my answer.
Okay, thank you candidates. So now what we're gonna do is we're gonna start with the candidates. You get two minutes to give your campaign speech. Tell them why they should elect you. So whoever wants to go first, go ahead. You have two minutes and I will let you know when your two minutes are up. Thank you so much.
Thank you, my lady. I am excited about being here today. I'm excited about the prospects of being the next city councilman for Ward Five. This is why. The councilman's job is to have a vision for the community. And that community would encompass everybody in that community. And the councilman's job as well is to engage all the resources that he has around him. From the employers to the skilled labor, as well as all those stakeholders and residents to be a part of that vision. That's a lot of work. There was a statement that was said earlier that I completely agree. This ward, which has roughly about nineteen percent unemployment, the median income is under thirty thousand and eight nine one oh six, sixty-five thousand and eight nine one three oh. This is a disparity that is unsustainable. It's putting too much burden on safety and security in Metro. And it's also opening up an opportunity for crime, if you will, to manifest. So when you have a community that was sent four blocks away from downtown, when I invested and put time into a partnership with UNLV, I thought about one thing. How do we get this jurisdiction incorporated in the downtown master plan? That is an achievement that I'm proud of. Now, by state charter, the city is amended to make an economic investment in that area. Which is what city's supposed to do. I believe in preservation. Out in the Northwest, one of the largest rural organizations, we now have a rural preservation study in place. The first job of a councilman's job is to preserve the community, keep them safe and go to the marketplace and bring economic investment. If I'm your city councilman, this is what I commit to doing. Spending my time in your community, engaging with you, answering your questions and being responsive. And above all, I had an opportunity to face city council and the forces of it that is not as pleasant as pretty. I've seen the underbelly of government. Government needs to be transparent, ethical and character matters. I believe in that. If we have it from the top down, it will convey to the constituency. Thank you.
Thank you again for having me here. As you're my councilwoman, I will bring to the table my real estate background. City council, I was elected to a zoning and I know zoning. I want to see a lot of the zoning laws changed. And I want to see a lot of what has happened with the titles of the different homes conveyed and fixed. Because a lot of times you can't sell a home because there's no title to it. This is real. It got, it got screwed up in the process. I will be available. I would like to have a offshoot area so that I can, you know, meet like at Starbucks and they have one. Once a week, get a Starbucks in different areas. Because Ward Five is such a vast area, it really is. We are a service-oriented area and that's pretty much what we are. I want to bring the service back in here. Because I'm a great fundraiser. I can get the public and the private together and let's make Ward Five a great ward again, like it was before. I'd like your vote. I would like your vote for this forum also. And thank you very much again, Patricia Messenger, Councilwoman, Ward Five.
I said before, I had the chance to live in a lot of different places, different cities, rural areas, metropolitan areas. And I've been in Vegas for almost half my life now. It's kind of weird to think of it that way. But I like it here. I like living in Las Vegas. It took me a while to figure out that that was actually the whole point of why I'm in politics at all and why I didn't care to read the paper about what's going on is because I like where I live. And I've seen the change. It's got a lot of good things about it. It's got some bad things. And like I said before, some things that need to be fixed. I don't wanna be like any other city. I know there are a lot of big plans with the stadium. A lot of people wanna see a lot of growth. But I don't wanna be like New York. I don't wanna be like LA. I don't wanna be like Detroit, Baltimore, any other city or San Francisco. I don't wanna be like Vegas. And the things about living here that I like, I wanna see stay. The things I don't like about being here are the things that I'd like to address. We talked about some.